Look at that.
Big by the mouth.
Thank you. Well, we're in, we're in this morning, but first. Good morning. I'm trying to make this a little bit more readable this time. July, you will say, we actually rebound very nicely in fuel sales. It's a slow start, may it be, instead of the weather. We were.
Are you on?
We were.
When you wait, anything points line?
Thanks.
They have, they have sound coming in, but they're not, they have sound coming in, but not going over the speakers for some reason.
Moving right along. Okay. Yeah. Moving right along.
Thank you.
Let me write along. Yeah, so year to date, we're, we're only down five percent on dollars in this year. Ten percent on value in my gallon, so we're, we're rebounding as the August top to the strong start of the weather. It's hours last year. Fuel sales wise and apparel. Dollar wise, down almost twenty-five percent. That's reflecting discounting to clear out last year's inventory. Rather than carrying it over for a third year, we'll try to get it out of there, get our money out of it this year, about next year.
Our money or any money?
Well, it's, yeah, any money.
I don't know what was bought in that, that's really why I asked you.
Well, I just had a question now.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's okay, go ahead.
Oh, it is, it is, I was reading, but yeah. Apparel failed. And we were, we're up. I, I have sold down on dollars, obviously, because of discounting, but we're gonna work, it, it's moving, so hopefully by the end of the year, we can get most of it cleared out. Get the money recouped and move on next year. Gas pump has been delivered. We're, we're planning on installing it in spring, it'll be much easier once that fuel dock is out of the water. We can get it added much easier, it'd be much easier to do unless the current pump fails, and obviously, we have to do it. About a day process, rather than losing a day of sale, to try to milk this current one till the end of the year, swap it out for the winter, spring. That's where that stands, with just a general information here, a lot of projects, we had go on like power washing buildings, changing out. On the outdoor restroom areas, there were a few light fixtures that just had dangling fluorescent kind of lights out there, drew a lot of bugs, it wasn't very bright, we replaced those with LED fixtures recessed. A lot brighter, a lot cleaner. Bug problem that we had. A metal fence coming up the driveway in area, you might remember, was the driveway by the bullpen area, and was leaning at about a thirty degree angle, so we got that straightened up and looking, looking like it, that might not fall on people's cars. A lot of, over the years, a lot of trash, a lot of stuff. Accumulated in those buildings over there, just because there was apparently no other place to put it, where we've been systematically going through it, getting rid of anything that's got, or we just clear all, clean up, clean up the area. Port barges. We're getting those ready for the fall, new cables were indicated. One of the barges we were using, whatever you you don't normally use. We had a big styrofoam blocks underneath the front end of it, hold it up for the weight of the hoists. In addition to the two pontoons, while we had a we hosted a open house and barletta demo ride day for Pioneer Hills, they, they donated a pontoon to us, so we can mount that in the center of that barge, hold it up rather than using foam blocks to do it. Lot safer. At the size. Bolt that up there before the fall comes. And generally, that's about it, just cleaning up, straightening up, and improving where we can, when we can, trying to sell some gas.
Okay. I think it looks very beautiful.
Thank you.
And flow, thank you.
Pardon?
As your flowers look good, thank you.
Well, we had expert, thanks for that. Any other board member requesting for? I do not, Ross, thank you very much. We appreciate it, and as always, if you can feel free to add something in the box.
Thank you. Building's all Jason. One and everything.
Morning.
So the reports for July, yeah, fourteen building permits, full electric permits, seven mechanic permits, three plumbing permits, two rental inspections of the reinspection. How many are there? You're just speaking up there.
I believe ten to twenties.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to make sure. These are the long.
Yes.
Long. And as we discovered, they're long. Yes, they slowly increase.
Discovery issue, important anything.
It is.
Yeah, we put it out there, I know additionally, and trying to give people self, new rate, but it's kind of a great thing.
Yeah, I'm going. So we had a total of eight thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars for the month. We have our first zoning board appeals of the year coming up this month. Which is kind of amazing that that was my first one, but it is. Planning commissions finally slowed down a little bit, we're actually not, we don't have anything this month, so we're not, we're not having a meeting this month. We'll get going again next month. And I guess that's about all I got.
Question doesn't find anything. And I know, just simply, I was nervous I'd find them. And you said there's nothing going on, it seems, so you're not having anything discussing. Are, are we, where are we at? When you say planning. Obviously, we've got to take a look at the short term rental situation, just wondering if maybe when planning commission meets again, and talking about having a senior unit or something that's prescribed for to the planning, not reacting, know we've got a lot of stuff, they've been very, very busy. Just my thoughts, one bit here, not certainly not a more, anything, just.
They, they have been.
I'm throwing it out.
They have been working on the short term rental.
Okay.
And something.
Perfect.
I believe Dave, or Dave, Tom Barber said, they kind of split into groups.
Okay.
And Tom said him, and then you know, I can't remember who he should have been, but spoke with two or three other townships went to visit them, and, and so they have some stuff they're probably talking about at the next meeting, about what they all heard. But they've been working.
Perfect, thank you. I think, I think it was Greg and I and Tom, supposed to be on the short term.
Okay.
Very good, before we, well, first off, is on the report, is there any questions from the board in your case? Are you hearing any? Terry, you dropped a note on line desk about a look at potentially changing or change or a garage sale, or any specifically line tree, you wanna cover that, Jason, and you know, that, the sign, obviously, these things affect you as well, if you're gonna answer questions, whatever.
Yeah, right now, on, on line three. Residents are allowed to garage sales either. But because of the three holidays, which is Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and everything. I think we should think about changing that from two sales per year to three sales per year. I mean, it's starting to generate a whole lot of revenue, but I just think it would be a nice addition to the garage sale.
I'd be interested in hearing board member and Jason comments at this time on that.
I don't see any issues with it. Overall, it doesn't affect me or my department a whole lot anymore, but I don't see any issue, I don't think we have a lot of people trying to have too many.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue, so.
The purpose of the ordinance, I think, definitely handle what we're looking.
Exactly.
Yeah. That was, yeah, okay.
People trying to have one every weekend on Sunday.
Very well.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's a good change. Now, how it can be done.
Michelle?
Sure. No problem with it.
Okay, what's your direction, that we do like to pursue that in ordinance change? For the coming months or two, the next? Anybody?
I'm good.
Chief?
I think it's good.
Any issue?
I don't have any issues with that, and it's a lot of times when people have their garage sales, it was on the holidays, you know, so I agree with it.
Okay, I'm really not sure, even though I was here with all that was put together, I don't remember why they did two, other than I remember that the focus was all because of repetitive, and we started to also see all I say is a business approach to going on, from the, from anybody that was on a main road, selling wares from a business that came up from down the state, and then transporting those wares back, and I think that was the whole intent of the piece on the regulation to begin with. So you're all, so what's your direction, you want me to bring? Carry mail, Terry, you wanna carry your mail, what do you wanna do?
Well, language.
Does it have to have a public here or there, or do we just say, I don't know, we, it gets advertised after we say we're going to.
Okay, so only thing required is just number change, right, I mean, and nothing else has to change.
It would appear, it would appear to be, but as with anything that has legal language, I wanna make good and sure we don't. Change something.
I'll follow up.
Will you?
Yeah.
I'll walk up to that, okay. It's an established ordinance, and ordinances are to be amended over the course of time, so. Anything else for Jason at all? Not hearing anything, Jason, thank you very much, very good. I love you. Thanks, Jason. We are going to change four to three, three to four, the partner chief has a doctor's point that came up like they're accommodating, so we'll, oh, here's the hint.
Appreciate that. Did have the report in front of you, so I'll just hit the highlights of that. July was probably a record month for us in the number of calls with eighty-five, you know, requests for service. Our average over the past five years has been sixty-eight, so it was really, really significant month. We're pretty much on track, the same number of calls this year as last year, three forty-four this year, three fifty-four last year, so we were a little bit slower in the springs, I think that, that reflects on that. We did request mutual aid from our neighbors four times this last month, because we were so busy, one was a multi-car accident, where we had both Markey and Higgins township helping us out with that. We also had a helicopter land for that call as well to transport a patient. And we provided mutual aid for our neighbors eight times, and we did five of them subs outside the township as well. Training was a little bit down this month because we were so busy, one of the reasons was Fourth of July was on a Thursday night, Thursdays are our normal training nights, and plus we were so busy that we couldn't fit in some of our normal trainings. Community involvement, pretty active again in the month with smoke alarms, combination, smoking CO alarms, and CO alarm installs, so we were pretty active there. So Rotary, we had, we invited Rotary to the station, and then we provided lunch, the Firefighters Association provided lunch for Rotary there, which was a really nice meeting, represented an understanding of fire EMS services in the county. There, we had probably close to thirty people to Rotary here, and I think it was a really good, good time, and I think they enjoyed the, the, they enjoyed the meal for sure, and I think they enjoyed the presentation, so. I think that was really good. Both Cottage Grove Association and Lakeside Association invited us out to the camps, went to discuss emergency response and department services while we were out there. We, we even looked at their AEDs, you know, pump things like expired pads and things like that, so we helped them figure out how to, how to get those. And we also looked at their first aid kits, and talked about possibly putting on CPR and first aid courses for, for some of their residents there, or their staff that work in the kitchens and things like that, and I think next year, I think next year we'll be doing, especially in Lakeside, and be doing CPR and choking and those kinds of things, like training for the staff there. We attended a meeting with our billing service, Accumen. Larry, this is gonna be changing a little bit, the way the billing works from them, the way that the money comes in, I'll have to sit down.
We set up correctly.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna affect that, but, so that, Accumen was bought by another billing service, and so they're merging and going through a bunch of changes, it's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt us, I don't think, but I think it's actually gonna make it a little bit easier for us, because they're gonna bring their technology up to speed, they're gonna have a website, a web app that we can use instead of going through a FTP site and things like that, so it's gonna be gonna be a little easier down the road, but they just sent me the new invoicing thing, which, Michelle, it's not gonna matter to you, I'll code it and live on that, but it's all just some new procedures, so if there's anything different, Barry, you'll sit down and go through that.
What is the name of that company, do you know?
EMS MC, which is, I don't know what the MC stands for, but.
EMS MC?
EMS slash MC.
MC, okay.
Accumen was our, was the previous company we're working with. Assistant Chief Gillian and Rogers both met with the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association and presented a similar similar presentation on understanding for any of the services of accounting, I think that went over very well as well. Then on department activities, the department staffed up for Fourth of July like we do every year, this year, fortunately, with Fourth, the Fourth of July being on a Thursday, we thought we might have to staff up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and explore the park, but with the weather conditions, Thursday was our only day, which is really nice.
Yeah.
So we, on the Fourth of July, we had six calls for service that day, four of them were in the park, and one was on the, the north side of Old Lake, near the North Shore, near Long Point, where there was a boating accident where one person died there, and we transported one, a different individual, but, so we had to assist, assist on there as well. Significant events, so public meetings that we, we held in June and July about the proposed, that proposal was on the ballot, went pretty well. Also, the nine-one-one Authority Board, which I'm the chair of, has been pretty active, and I've been really active with the replacement of the new director, Brian Satt, on the committee for that, and we ended up with Jessica Gilbert, who is currently the acting director at nine-one-one dispatch, and I think she's gonna do a good job, I've been meeting with her and talked with her several times, I've met with her a few times, with her and encourage her and Julie Galantino, and talked over expectations, and how we can help her with budget and human resources and those kinds of things, so I think we're on good track with her, we're gonna be meeting, the Authority Board meets Tuesday next week, to go over some of the projects that were in the works before the previous director left. And I sat down with Jessica and went through those projects with her, and the Authority Board is going to make a decision moving forward with those, and then at the Commissioners Meeting on the fourteenth, County Commissioners Meeting, Jessica will be appointed, hopefully appointed as the director there, and while she's there, she'll be asking for approval to spend some money on these projects, so. So we're, we're staying busy working with nine-one-one authority at this time. As I mentioned earlier, during July, it was a record number of calls of eighty-five, and it was some difficult calls. And so, you can read it there, we ended up having to have, we had in one shift, in one EMS shift, we had two deaths, it was not an unexpected death, but still, still wasn't pleasant, the other one was a one-year-old end state park, which we, we did CPR and tried to save, and went unsuccessful taking that patient to the hospital. Afterwards, we did a debriefing with our staff to help them through that process. Upcoming events. So next Monday is our department hearing, as we all know, my brother hearing, so we'll be looking forward to that. August twenty-sixth, the Insurance Service Organization, which is how your insurance companies determine how much your house, homeowner's insurance will be, the Insurance Service Organization conducts a review of emergency services. And previously, our rating was a nine and ten years ago, and probably fifteen, twenty years ago, we did a we did a, a rating of the insurance service, where they had to come out and test our ability to respond, we had to do water supply, we had to go look at our training records, our response times, we had to look at all the equipment on the trucks, and we went through a whole process to get our rating, our rating was reduced to a seven. The following year was reduced to a six, which is significant in your homeowner's insurance, you can, if you're you talk to your homeowner, insurance agent, make sure they understand that your rating is a six, it's gonna lower your homeowner's insurance. So they come out every once in a while and make sure we're still on track with that, and August twenty-sixth is our, our date to do that. And we're hoping, because we have more full-time staff on, we can respond to that quicker than we were a few years ago. Plus, we have another water supply source on the north end of the township, that maybe, maybe they'll look at that and consider rolling in another, another number, so. If we get it down to a five rate, if not, I'm sure we'll stay at a six, which is, which is really good. Then August twenty-second, myself and a firefighter, E N T Sanford, are attending the Fire Marshal Summit here at the Ram Center. The Fire Marshal sent out a request to specifics for departments and chiefs that they have an interest in having come to the summit, and I was one of those, but they also requested that we bring a firefighter that has anywhere from five to twelve years of experience. And the reason they wanna do that is they're looking at current and expected issues in the fire service, and I think they wanna reach that younger generation that has some experience. So that they can speak to how the fire service has changed over the years, what they, what they need to do to help that generation of firefighters, you know, and help the service in general, so I think this will be a pretty interesting summit, it's at the Ram Center, so it's close by, you know, travel's easy, so. That's what I've got. Oh, the other thing is, go, go ahead.
That's fine, I was just new, new subject, so you're, go ahead, I, I was just curious as to your thoughts on the election results and what happens next, and what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, so yeah, we were obviously disappointed in the results, but I think, I think we did a pretty good job overall through the last few months, getting information out there and educating folks, but I think we gotta do a better job of that as well for the next, next month, few months or years. We're gonna get the building committee back together, and we're gonna sit down and talk about, you know, what our options are, where we wanna go, and those kinds of things. You know, so I'm not positive where we're gonna go just yet, until we get that group together. You know, the, the option, of course, is to put it back on the ballot in the future, whenever that might be, or to look at, you know, the building itself, and if we wanna change anything there, you know, those kinds of things. One of the things I was thinking about was, you know, get the architect back engaged and find out what other options we have with them as well, so. But then until we get that group together, we really don't have a, a plan at this point. And what we'll be including, the group that has included Terry, and he's still welcome to be involved, but somebody from the board should be engaged in that group.
Very. Just let us know when that time is.
Yep.
We'll make sure, whatever happens, I personally myself, I don't think it was necessarily a fire arrest problem, I think it was just an overall potential taxation problem, when you take a look at everything that was on the ballot, and then, of course, we have our special assessment district, super discussion. It's been very hard to have. So as I told you, intimated you, and I'll say it in public, and I hope the employees, they'll, they'll take this personally, I think it just is a sign of the times at this point, it's not that their service is not valued by our our folks, I, I don't believe that for a minute.
Right.
It, it, it is valued, and for myself, very much valued. Successful public safety programs, partnerships with community are what make a community thrive, and more than just survive. My support obviously continues to go to them as we discuss.
Yeah. I think that one thing I didn't even mention in the monthly report was the seventy-fifth anniversary celebration.
Yes. And then the other piece.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wasn't a department thing, but it was actually, it was actually the Firefighters Association is the group that put that on. You know, and it was for the seventy-fifth anniversary of the department, and I think that was very successful. I think we raised, you know, the community supported that, and we talked about community support, we had sponsorships from a bunch of different, you know, businesses and groups in the area. So there was no cost to the department for that at all, the only cost will be the, the video that we put together, which we're gonna put on our website, if you haven't had a chance to see that, it's about thirty, thirty-five minutes long. Redline Media put that together for us, we're going to put that on our website, and it's, they interviewed current and past members of the fire department. They did some, you know, video of trainings and activities that we do, and they put this documentary together about the history of it, I think it's really, really good. So we'll have that out there on the website in the near future here, as soon as I can figure out how to do that. So, yeah, the other, the other thing we had is a potential new hire that's on our agenda there. We did the background on Abby, her name is Abigail Rodden, she's a paramedic firefighter out of Aranac County, Standish Thoroughly, she works for MMR and for the Standish Fire Department. She's about, I think she's like twenty-five years old, and she's been a paramedic for three years now, working for MMR, and a firefighter since she turned eighteen, she's been on the fire department prior to being eighteen. We, we interviewed her, she's very straightforward, she has some experience, she talked about, but I think, I think she's gonna be a good asset as a part-time paramedic firefighter, she'll be able to fill shifts when I focus on vacation and when we have holes in our schedule. And the background came back good, checked a couple of references, and we all, we know some folks that know her, I think, and she's gonna be a very good employee. So if we can improve that through one of these, that'd be great.
Yeah, making a note of that, agenda, I think, as well, too, also, Jim, just as a note review, I did give all the board members a copy of this, the following, there was a twenty-twenty-four court ruling recently on earned sick time, and it really is probably the most, one of the most big things I think that's here. But clearly you have specifically part-time as a title. And it does say large employers, more than ten employees must provide seventy-two hours of paid sick leave, so I just wanted to make sure it's on your radar, it, I'm waiting for more, and I told in twenty-twenty-five, there may be some add-ons that now that the, the Supreme Court has ruled on it here in Michigan. Basically, what this does is kind of overturn the Snyder administration back many moons ago with some of that, that language, so just be aware of it, I, I just got a snippet, it's really weird because it says it uses the Earned Sick Time Act is applicable to all employee, employers and employees regardless of the number of employees or types of employees, and it includes temporary employees and independent contractors, so that leads me to believe the total number of employees that would affect. I don't think if, there's, I can't find seasonal mentioned in there anywhere, and it says employees must grant employees one hour of paid sick time for every thirty hours worked. Uh, and it says employees must grant employees one hour of paid sick time for every thirty hours worked. Subject to annual maximums. That's kind of where I get confused with the seasonal, because there are some seasonal max, ma- uh, max, maximums, so. And it says small employers, those less dependent ways, must offer forty hours. In the, uh, in thirty-two hours unpaid leave, but forty hours sick and thirty-two hours, so I. Take some time, uh, and if you have any contacts in the fire area, Chief. If you have, I know you don't have part-time, but I'm pretty sure that M A C P might have something that could weigh in on a interpretation of this. Of the, of, of this, this case, I mean, how it might affect us for the future, so we'll set up our banks properly.
I haven't seen anything come across from M A C P, but.
Maybe if you could reach out, maybe Dave Kirk, uh, so the legislative chair there and see what, um, what, what he might be able to. Kind of give us a glimpse of.
Okay, uh, any, uh, any questions for Jim?
Joe?
No, not really, but I'm glad that, that you guys are gonna keep moving forward, don't get out of the fire department.
Yeah, we just gotta figure out where we're going.
Yeah.
My question was how did the alcohol issue turn out?
No problem at all, um.
Not an issue.
Yeah, wasn't an issue, we had, we had, uh, three folks in attending the bar, and. One was real experienced, worked at casinos, and that was his job, was managing the food and beverage, and. And we were very conscious of how much people were drinking and keeping an eye on things and checking I D, so yeah, everything worked, went very well. Everybody was positive, after the seventy-fifth, nobody had any complaints on it, the food was great, so I think, yeah, we, we were good.
All right, uh, Larry, anything else, Larry, Jim, other than the doctor, if that's possible.
Yeah, but, and, thank you very much.
Uh, first thing I want, uh, to update on is, uh, Officer Sturges, he's, uh, been in contact with us. And, uh, yeah, I think he has one more people therapy treatment left. And, uh, next week he has an appointment with a surgeon to see if he has to have surgery. After all his chemo treatments, um, he's in high hopes that he doesn't have to, so he can get it to work. Uh, if he doesn't have to, he'll have to have his port removed. And then after he has the port removed, uh, it takes about a month to heal up. So he's hoping with no surgery and, and everything looking good, that he'll be back, uh, possibly in September, beginning of October. Um, you know, we're looking forward to be, if he can come back. I mean, we hope that he, he can, but if he has to have surgery, obviously he'll be all longer and. Till after the first year, but I know he's excited to come back and say that to us, so that's okay on him. Um. Next thing is, uh, this one's we had a citizen call about issues at the St. Lawrence Road End with the public dock at the road ends, uh, citizens stated. Subjects are aggravating at the road end and using it as a beach area. Uh, they also stated that there's some raiding on the dock and, uh, hooking ramps up to the dock and things. Um, and also that there was a no parking sign that was damaged due to a garbage truck hitting it, um. We've, uh, contacted the permit holder for the St. Lawrence, uh, Road End Doctor. And advised him of the complaint and what's going on down there, I mean, obviously they weren't aware of it, so they're gonna address the issues. With the association and everything, um, also contacted the road commission, and they were able to get out there and fix that no parking sign. That was, uh, bent over from the, what had everybody, the truck had turned the corner. A little too sharp and, and clipped it and spent it over, so there we get that fixed and back up. And then, uh, we also, uh, followed up with the citizen, let him know what we did, and, uh, he's even be happy with that. Um, just a little further on that, there was some, another complaint that came in just recently, I know Supervisor Hill had talked to the woman. Of, uh. Uh, property owner there had put up a sign of a private road for Sheridan Drive. At, runs, runs along the shoreline there in front of the houses, and, uh. So we contacted the road commission, advised them of that, and they're, uh, looking into that right now, I haven't got an update on it. Um, but there's also some planners in the road right away and things that they've been advised of, so the road commission is, uh, addressing those issues. Uh, also a follow-up from last month. Uh, we had a citizen contacted requesting, uh, two twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs being placed on Reese Forest Drive. Uh, the citizen's concern is R B's are driving extremely fast on the straight portion of the roadway after they get around the curve there. Down towards the lake. Um. She said that it's only a problem in the summertime, and there are no issues in the winter months, um, so I, I contacted her and explained the, uh. The process that we had to go through, and, uh. I've also spoke with, uh, Roger at the road commission, um, and he, he advised that it's a part of the subdivision. In the primary facet of laws applies, as this is a non-posted twenty-five mile an hour zone. Um, so I guess I just bring it before the board here to see if they wanna pursue putting some signs up. Obviously, ca- a cost to the citizen, which she said she's willing to pay that, um. I've advised, uh, my officers about the complaint, and they've gotten down in that area. Um, set some stationary radar and things, and haven't seen any issues with it, um. Just wanna give your thoughts on this.
Any board member who wanted to respond to that, uh, at all?
Well, if they paid for it, there's a reason why we wouldn't do that if it was an issue.
Well, I, I think if you start putting it in that subdivision, then other subdivisions are gonna want signed up.
That's my question, it is a great issue in the future because you're doing something, one place and not all the person, you're saying that could.
Right, yeah. And it's, it's, she's saying it's only in the summertime, but obviously there's no way in the wintertime. I mean, I think with coming to extra enforcement in that area, we can handle the situation. Versus, versus putting up twenty-five mile an hour signs, is it gonna get people to bow? This game, and then, you know.
So we're putting that into twenty-five mile an hour zone, it's a state law statutes anyways.
Right.
And it becomes a serious slip or slope.
Well, I mean, obviously you can enforce it with all the signs, so. What's that gonna change? They don't read, they're gonna still do what they always do.
Speed. Signs are notoriously, um, not. They're, they're not a real interest. No, that's what I'm saying, I, I personally myself, I don't wish to take it up. You certainly have to have much more value in that election to claim what is a problem. What that problem is, uh, and without any of that, uh, oh. A person myself, right, but I just wanted to. Anybody else on the board wanna make your comment?
I agree that, I don't think we should start putting signs up, um. We just see what happens, like you said, it gets out of hand, but well addressed, right now, I think it's okay.
Yeah, I agree, because we already had a request earlier, uh, a few months ago about Arnold Street, and, uh, no, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up that citizen, I don't know, on our decision. Thank you, uh, Chief Fisher had already touched on this about, uh. Updating on central dispatch, uh, just one thing I'd like to add on that is, uh, we're also advised that we hired two new dispatchers. Um, so it is nice to see that they're going back in the right direction, and, uh. Our department still continuing to be, uh, supportive and, uh, patient with them as they move through these tough times. Uh. Also, uh, the M Co's Public Safety Academy Assistance Program, which is the, uh. Program that departments are using to sponsor recruits to go through the academy. That was updated, uh, this is number ten, and I actually, uh, had misread. Uh, what I put in there, it's, uh, not thirty million, uh, they, they re, uh, did it with ten million dollars. Instead of thirty, as it was the, the first go-around, and, uh, it's twenty thousand dollars per recruit, not twenty-four thousand dollars per. Um, I just learned that yesterday, so I, I wanna update that. But, uh, the funds from the first go-around from the thirty million, uh. Uh, temporary voice from M Co's advised that it is now depleted as of yesterday. It, um, so that, uh, program is ended, but this, uh, this new ten million is, uh. Not looking to take effect until October, so the funds will probably at the earliest be available in November. For A P Ts, um, is what they're thinking, but, uh, that's okay on that, and it's, I mean, it's good news for us. I mean, we'd like to see the thirty million, but, uh, ten million better than nothing. Uh, jumping down to number nineteen, uh, our operations plan for the. Uh, South Lake State Park seem to be effective this July fourth, fifth, and sixth, um. The largest cloud was reported on July fourth, uh, however, the fights and assaults were minimal this year. Uh, alcohol still seemed to be a factor along with parking issues, uh, the biggest issue were the parking issues, I think, um. And the largest complaint from local businesses in the area, uh, business owners complained of people parking in apartment lots and then walking into the park. Um, so what I've done, I've drafted a letter to, uh, Rachel Roberts, who's the manager for the South Lake State Park. Um, basically asking her to look into this, um. That if you're gonna continue to allow these large crowds on the fourth, and, and it's not even on the fourth anymore, it's on a busy. Weekend, not next weekend, I've gone by there multiple times where they had their sign up that it says parks full. Um, but if they're gonna continue to allow, allow these crowds, that it's time that they might have to look at their infrastructure and, uh. Expand their infrastructure to accommodate these, uh, large crowds, so it's not affecting our local businesses and, uh, their business during these times. So I, I drafted that letter up, and I've started contacting the local businesses in that area, um, providers to support. Um, so once I get those letters, I'll present that to the park. Um, and I'm also looking to see if I can get a letter of support from the township, I, I talked to Supervisor Hill about that. And, uh, I've also talked to Russ, the manager at Alina, to get a letter, um. So once, I'm, and I'm getting together with them when, when things slow down at your summer months for debriefing on the fourth, and then. Hope that that time I can present it to them.
So, um, yeah, for clarification, obviously, any type of letter of support or otherwise for consideration. Uh, you would need to tell me what month, uh, so that that can come before the board at a proper regular meeting. Uh, to authorize one of the board members for whatever the issue. Uh, or approve that kind of letter, uh, so I, we'll take our timing from you. Uh, I'm aware, I'm aware you wanted it, obviously, and, and, uh, so. I don't really wanna add it to this month and then lose the issue for two months, so if you're not going to be ready to rock and roll this month. It becomes a lost issue for us, and.
Yeah, I, I.
It can be time relevant.
I haven't gotten any letters from the business owners yet, um, I've just, I've started contacting them and advising.
So at appropriate time, then give us a formal request.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the other departments and administrators and see if we can set a debrief meeting, and get a date for that. Um. Just a quick update on the technology area for the P D, uh, we found the Bonnie's desk tower was replaced. As it was due in our technology plan to keep minutes up to date with modern technology speeds and hard drive updates. Uh, we have budgeted for the replacement of two other towers, but at this time, uh, everybody seems to be functioning well. And then on the community front, uh, this Saturday, uh, August tenth, we have our. G T B D Act now fifteenth annual golf outing fundraiser, which is at Redwood, uh, Golf Course. Uh, we're to full capacity, we have twenty-two teams, eighty-eight golfers. And, uh, we seem to have plenty of volunteers this year for all the hole games and, and things like that setting up, which is really nice. Um, so that, like I said, that's the Saturday, August tenth, registration is at nine, with the shotgun start at ten A M at, uh, Redwood Golf Course.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you. Any questions, uh, any board members, question for Chief Mashinsky?
I have two, uh, Larry, Fred. Uh, first one is a question I've had for a long time, and really was developed yesterday. Nibbles down there with all that parking, both sides of the road, a little girl ran up in front of the yesterday between two parked cars, she went up over the hill, that's a dangerous spot. We get really concerned about the park, people parking along the road, but that's so congested. I'm surprised somebody hasn't been hurt, never realized there's low limited parking, but when you have fifty people standing around the road next to the white line. What are you gonna do? I mean, how do we address this issue? It can't be a safe situation.
I mean, that, that's always been a concern for us, um, and now Supervisor Hill will also contest this, but. That used to be much worse there, um, before the road commission did their study and, and took down part of that hill and. Put that proper intervention on the curb and everything there.
I mean, I don't wanna turn down the business, but they don't provide any parking, and it's in the road right away, and we know it's an issue, so. Do we just ignore it, or just say this is the way it is? I mean, I hate to have a tragedy happen because we know it, but we don't know how to address it.
Right, I mean, for us at the police department, they, they can park on the other side of the road, there's not, no parking there, so. There's really not a whole lot that we can enforce there, and they, they can park on the, on the right side, too, on Nibble's side also.
Right, I understand that, I'm just saying, I mean, I scared the crap out of me yesterday, and I wasn't very happy about that, and I. Glad nothing happened, but I'm not the only person that, that has that kind of situation, so I don't got an answer, I'm just bringing it up because it's a problem.
I have always said, Larry, um. One of the components always is, uh, Michigan Action Location Index, it's a report. And people, people, um, although. Everyone complains about it out there, obviously, if you were to do a study out there, and if we went to the road commission. The study will show, uh, very minimal accidents for the amount of per car capita that goes through there during those times that we're all concerned about. So it, it remains to be one of those things, uh, you know, when a really bad, uh, happens, maybe the road commission, uh. Would agree it is their road to take a look at that in a different manner, but I run into that, I used to run into that all the time. And also the eighty-fifth percentile. And when the traffic studies get done, they never seem to come from the state, uh, during that, when I call three months, uh, that we have all that traffic. And they come out in September or October, and they do a study, and you could shoot a gun down through there, nobody's there. That is what the P E has run into for my entire existence, and now Chief Mashinsky has inherited it. And, uh, I, I do understand what you're saying, I think we all have anecdotal stories that almost near misses. Um, and, uh, the only thing this board could do. Is ask the road commission once again to do a study and, 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 uh. And, uh, potentially have a comment because it's their road. Um, and, uh, to give back to us, that is our only island.
I realize this is only a three months a year problem, and it's usually in the evenings, I mean, every, every night, it's like that, and so I just. I, I have certain parameters, so I thought I'd bring it up.
It's also pushed down to the polar parlor, uh, down there, fortunately, the dentist office next door are good neighbors, and, you know, people fill that parking lot up. Once again, it's just, these are, these are all symptoms of an overused area, um, down there, and, uh.
And then another contributing factor is Bear North Creamery.
Yes.
You know, shut down, what, two or three years ago now, and nobody bought that, and that was always a lot of overflow from. Polar Parlor and Nibbles, so that, those people don't have anywhere to go there either.
You reduce two businesses from three, but every, but we still want a size grid, and, uh. It's highly populated, I, I hear you, Larry, I don't mean to say I'm not concerned, I always have been concerned. I just know when I have, uh, attempted in my past to do things, I know that those two things are the ones that always come back as.
Well, I didn't say, I have an answer to it, but it is a problem, and I don't want us just to say.
Yep.
Well, it is what it is, but that's what we're saying, because we really don't have any control of the road, and they can do whatever they wanted to do, but. I just think that that is unfortunate, you know, tear down some of those buildings next to it and buy it and make a parking lot. Would we let any other organization have that kind of traffic uncontrolled anywhere else in the township? Well, it's been this way for a hundred years or whatever it is, so I mean, it's not new.
Now, you're not suggesting governmental annexation, are you, or, or?
No, I'm not saying, no, I think the owner of the business, I'm not talking about us.
Okay, cause I can't, I can't affect change like that. Okay, cuz I can't, I can't affect change like that.
No, I mean, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
Uh the last thing is um I've seen in a lot of townships, they have these signs that are posted. Hung right on like stop sign or no passing sign that has a speed limit with a monitor, you're driving down the road, it says you're slowing fifty-five. Or seventy instead of a forty. Are those extremely expensive? Do you think they're effective? Because I live on a straight stretch of West Higgins Lake Drive and it was even more evident this weekend. That is like a highway there because you can pass, so nobody thinks that forty is only a suggestion and nobody drives four ever. And I'm thinking, you know, this is just getting worse and worse and worse. And you you got, they don't read any anyway now, are those things effective at all or are they extremely expensive? And what's your thought?
Well, we yeah, we had actually looked into getting some a couple of years ago um at the chief's conference and there was actually a grant available. It was Supervisor Hill that actually applied for the grant, I think it was it was through O H S P, right? Yeah. Um however, we were denied for the grant, um. Basically because we're a smaller agency in in our opinion, but uh so we 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 did look into getting them and and they are expensive. I mean, they range anywhere from five thousand to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, you know, depending how you let it read with them, cuz. You can have, there's different programs with them that, you know, software that you can have right through your computer and stuff and you you can look right there in the office. You know, what the speed limits are and stuff, so um yeah, we did look at getting them and, you know, believe that they would be effective, it's just, it's a it's a cost issue.
I also uh had tried to write one through insurance company too, uh and it was unsuccessful. Obviously, the problem exists everywhere, so it's kind of like a diversification of a lot of money turns into next to no money in the end. And we satisfy a few at a time. So, yeah, we've identified the what I call the thorny issues for the police department here, that's for sure today over the years because. We we just, you know, it's it's difficult. It's difficult and, you know, I mean, to to the police department certainly doesn't have money to just throw at traffic signs. Uh the road commission uh used to have one of those large trailer signs uh that had the. But uh it has been broke for as long as I can remember, at least that's what I've been told when I've requested it. Cuz I used to and I probably overstated my welcome because I used to ask for that in a couple of different spots numerous times over the summer. And then. They it from there on in, apparently it got broken, it's no longer available, so.
But yeah, it would be nice to have a couple of, cuz I mean, like the.
Because you can rotate them out, because they're just small box with sit on a post and I don't think he complicated, well, something just says. Slow down, you're going sixty, you know, uh but I don't.
They don't have just a a simple model that, you know, just flash a design there, they they all collect that and now and there's software. And then it's a yearly.
Yes.
So I mean, I don't know how expensive they are, what the actions.
Alright, so. Believe me, I'll be looking um for grant opportunities regularly to try and, you know, see what we could do with that. Um it it and and either through the police department, uh even fire EMS, the general township, certainly the general township budget is just. Very challenged and PD and fire are in a little better condition, but uh it's a matter of finding. Who's guiding and getting the award, if you will, so. Uh because simply budgeting for that, I I just don't. I was kinda counting road commission owns those roads. And if anybody ought to be sitting down and figuring out grants and figuring out how to do that, I'm sorry, and that I firmly believe they should be the road commission, they are their roads. So.
Yeah, I I did look at a couple of grants that they come through, thinking that we might really use that for the for those signs. And uh just because we're a smaller department, we qualified for the grant, so I'm also keeping my eyes open also.
And those traffic counts become an issue and as we just discussed, three months out of years, uh traffic and we don't have the. Infrastructure and the rest of the time, we have too much infrastructure according to the grant book, so. Okay, uh chief. Okay, very good, thank you, chief, I appreciate you. Uh next one was glue. Well, and I I don't, Jim, I don't show you with report, you had.
No, I'm afraid if you don't have one, we're kind of in a pause really and I.
So there's no report?
No. I'm just saying that we continue to work on our grants, the biggest issue we have right now is financial. Uh in order to move forward, we need money, to get the money, we have to comply with all the grant requirements, which is setting up the payable. The pay program and and uh how are we going to get reimbursed? A number of them where we we need to get money that we have to spend then get reimbursed, so we've been continuing to request donations. But as far as any work on project, there's been very, well, there's been none. That last two, you know, weeks and months, just because we uh we are financially constrained. And are at the whim of these grant organizations, a couple of them had indicated earlier this year that we would get out in April. And hoping to have money to continue on, but hopefully uh we're getting all of our paid system set up. Or, you know, how we have to request the reimbursements and how long it'll be, because it'll be. Avoid when we have to pay a forty thousand dollar bill, then we have to wait three weeks or, you know, two weeks, whatever, to get the money reimbursed. To move forward, so we're kind of in that kind of situation at this point in time. But hopefully, once we get that, we'll be able to get a lot of the background where we need information to continue with the design and move forward.
My heart, my heart goes out to uh Glue for Aaron, the Lion Township all the board members.
Well, they haven't been voted in yet, that'll be November, but. Yeah, so no, yeah, this is the primary.
They take place, yeah.
Primary, so, you know.
They'll be having a ballot again?
Yeah, they'll be having a ballot.
They'll be running against the the board that's there now?
No, they'll be, this one's primary, it's relating to the Republican candidates. So I don't know if any independent or Democrats are going to. Will know and, you know.
Well, independents would have had to have filed already, and the only challenge is it could come over a line of township order even here. It would be a right in and uh. A right in or an existing Democrat that would have come through, cuz I think, weren't they, were they all Republicans? Yeah, so I I I would say that there's, you know, that that's what's out there.
So that will be a challenge to get this. Uh you must see. Or, you know, authority. So they have been put into it, so, okay.
Well, I think the thing that everyone needs to understand, uh board and everyone, but it Glue is an authority and a. Corporation essentially and it was propped up by Geras Plan. And uh and obviously, we know that Lion Township folks in that election have been very boisterous about. Uh uh the just that issue, if you will, and apparently it carried through in the primary. Uh and it appears to have unseated the board, uh but we'll wait till the governor to see what happens, so that's gonna be interesting. Uh we would, uh they have to indicate something about our partnership and they have responsibility to that authority. Um it's not as easy as walking in and we said in your special assessment district or whatever, there are some bigger processes. That would face a challenge in the future. Uh and obviously, their their piece then becomes our piece. So until November, we don't know, we don't, we just don't know, right, exactly. So that's where we're at, um I appreciate it, thank you, uh Joe.
Hopefully, in the next meeting, we'll have a lot more information as to where we're proceeding and that we do have actual. A good pool of money coming in, but we do have the set grants, the one million.
Those are, those are all reimbursement.
Uh the the federal is not.
Not a river.
Not a river, but the smaller ones are, but that'll, it'll be probably not until September. Probably more like October, anything seems to get delayed, might or we can tap into that. Biggest issue. If anybody has any extra money.
We're happy to take it like everybody else.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are now on to Parks and Recs uh highlights and um I guess Tuesday or Mary Jo, who's doing it?
You are, right?
But let me just run through it, it's not very long, um. I do want to start because it's right here on the agenda where it says Parks and Rec on resignation Brian Lewis. So I did not write that, but you all know, we just sent an email to. Several, made the whole board, um and also to the Parks Committee, so Brian Lewis from the Parks Committee, he resigned in July.
So we need to acknowledge Tuesday, because I have not heard this as far as so. Uh we need to formally accept a resignation, do we have a letter?
He wrote a letter.
That's it? That's our, okay, so we've got one line email, okay. All right, function right. Well, I don't. Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, um few highlights, I wanted to spend a minute talking about the uh recreation passport grant. Improvement project at uh the township park. Um several of you know that we did receive two bids for that construction work in the end of July. Shucky Consulting at two fifteen, two hundred and fifteen thousand roughly, and Boarding Construction Services at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. I'm reminding you there on the top of the page that the total project is two hundred thousand dollars, but there's twenty-three thousand earmarked for the engineering fees. So really, my construction budget is only a hundred and seventy-six, nine hundred. So even Shucky coming in at two fifteen was too high from the construction budget. And I'm just showing you there to the side, the two fifteen is made up of a hundred and forty for the play structure and seventy-five for the bathroom building. So I've been um talking with Chase and with the engineering firm. And we have decided, and I've also been in contact with the D N R, that if we make these adjustments. Remove the spinner, which was the small play structure and the surfacing that goes under it because it's incredibly expensive. And we need to take out one additional tree per Chase's uh inspection of the site. Um that gets that price down to one seventy-four five, which is about twenty-three hundred dollars less than my construction budget. So that is what we'd like to do, uh Chase is in agreement. Um it's okay for the D N R to remove it, and so I'm presenting that, recommending that to you guys.
Does he have an amended um document that he has attached uh that shows the ones seventy-four, five, twenty-five?
This is.
Or actions?
This is the um comparison that we got from, yeah, the engineering firm, he takes this as the first column there on the left. So this is the updated bid sheet that shows the two and it also shows the competitor with an adjusted price, if I took out the spin and took out the surfacing. So the prices on that one in the lower right-hand corner, there's an adjust uh revised date, you can see it's an updated one from what um Michelle, you saw earlier. So that is his price, is there something confusing on that? Right in the middle of the page, it says one seventy-four, five, twenty-five. Under the column, Shucky Consulting, kind of right in the middle of the page. Sorry, this is the detailed comparison and the detailed uh quote by Ryan Element.
I'm confused, so we had a bid process and both of them came in over the bed.
Right.
And we didn't award or ask to award to anybody a bid. And did we notify both parties in the bid that said that both parties are over? Or did we just notify the low bid?
Uh we notified the low bid, that he was low bid, he was in the room, he saw it when we opened these. And then I worked with the engineering firm to confirm that I could work with him to make that a viable option. The D N R wants you to pick the low bid and since even the low bid was outside of my budget, I worked. With him and to make these decisions, which was pretty easy to pull out that big chunk of money. Um that would allow us to get within my budget, so now the lowest bid also fits within my budget for construction.
Did you contact this Gordon and see if he had any other potential uh alterations to his for fairness to the low bid?
No, and that's not necessarily needed to be done, because it's not up to Gordon Construction to consider. How he might modify the scope of work, it was up to Garrish Township to modify the scope of work, which is what we did by suggesting the spinner being removed. His price also now shows the spinner being removed.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I I do understand that, I'm just. All of this took place with no board action in between and that's what I'm trying to procedurally make sure we got squared away.
Okay.
We had a bid opening, uh. One word under there? You, two were there.
Two were there.
Uh two were there and we discovered at that time it both were over budget on the bid. And so no decision was made regarding that whatsoever, other than internally, you gotta look at doing something different. So you then went, I'm just trying to synopse, you then went, cuz I've had discussions with you. Um you then went and said, okay, how do I make this work with our trust fund grant? Uh and you contacted those folks at the trust fund and said, hey, you know, what can I do to modify to get this within the scope of our. Our couple hundred thousand budget and they said, they said, yeah, you can take away a couple spinners or whatever, make it back to one seventy-four. And then you obviously confirmed that with with the low bid at the time, which would have been. Uh Shucky.
Right.
And then we didn't have a discussion though with Gordon to say, look, we intend to pull those numbers out. Um at all.
I did not have that discussion.
And you say that we don't have to consider that based upon the trust fund language?
Um it's actually a red passport grant, it doesn't come from the trust.
Oh, sorry, red passport, yeah.
And we we don't have to have a conversation with Gordon Construction about this. Um I I talked to my my D N R rep this uh yesterday, today, this morning, um so. The the process that needs to happen now is that we need to have bids. From these people that meet my criteria and now is when I'm taking it back to the board to request a board action, so. It's it's true that the board has not done anything yet, but now what I'm saying is, we have bids. We have two bids that we need, we have one that's a little bit that fits our requirements and meets our budget now, so what I would like. The board to do now is to agree that this is what you would do and I still need to upload several pieces of material to the D N R. Um for their approval also.
So quite simply put, just the way you've written here, please pass for a resolution. Uh do you have resolution language?
I will give that to Michelle.
Okay, to accept Shucky Consulting as the contractor, but we haven't awarded the bid yet.
No, you don't actually award the bid, this is simply to, um this is my.
We don't get to award a bid for something done in our township?
No.
Absolutely not.
You do, but just not yet, so all you're doing in this resolution is saying that you would accept Shucky Consulting. Then I have to give that to the D N R, then the D N R has to say, okay, all your paperwork's in order, you can award the bid. Then you can call Shucky Consulting, award the bid and get a contract with Shucky.
I can't call them, there has to be a board action to award that bid. Period.
So, so.
So if we have to do a special meeting, Susan, we can do it for time concerns.
I get it, so.
But 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 simply put, the process can't be usurped.
Got it, I thought that if we had, so I guess we need to do two things, we need to have a resolution to accept the bid and then we need to have a. Action, if that's the right word, to award the contract.
We we, I like your, uh we can do a resolution to accept Shucky Consulting as a contractor.
Yes.
Then we will need a a uh to something that says we're awarding the bid to Shucky can can. Kind, whatever their name is, uh that they submit, any amount of a hundred and seventy-four, five, twenty-five or whatever is rambled between the state and the. Grant piece, okay, and then we can do that.
Okay.
Uh because currently, right now, we've we've told two people literally nothing, other than we opened your bids.
Right.
And it appears like you're a little too expensive both of you and um. I'm hearing you say that the the trust fund says you satisfied what they need on the grant piece.
Right.
Uh is what I'm hearing, right, you can work with that low bid because they require a low bid, I get that. Uh that's all, I just procedural is what I'm talking about. Um, that's all, I just procedural is what I'm talking about, I'm not being cantankerous, I'm just trying to get the procedure down correct. So, uh, you'll provide us with a resolution to accept Shepkey Consulting as a contractor.
Right.
For that, and then you will, after you have riddled with the DNR, you need to get with me, and if we need a special for time constraints, we can do it.
I, I would so appreciate that, I would love that, so, and that could even be next week, so I will.
Okay.
Get Michelle some wording, you guys can do that resolution on Tuesday at their meeting. Um, I will upload this stuff to the DNR, get them approval hopefully in that same week. And then maybe the following Monday or Tuesday, we can have a quick special meeting too.
I need eighteen hours notice in advance from the public. Uh, and then I know what you just said, and is there any board member like to comment, are you comfortable, would you like?
I'm, I'm a little confused, I missed the bid opening, yeah, we say I was gone. What's this third company, kind of line that says engineers estimate for eighty-six thousand, what's that really telling me?
I, I can tell you what that is, that was before we went on to any bids, this was a estimate from an engineering firm as to what we thought these line items might cost, even before they were really fully stuck. This was used in the, um, the specifications that went into the grant request a year and a half ago. So it was very high line estimate, so we knew which categories we were looking for and what these might cost. So that's okay, I'm not bothered that there's a swag difference there between what, uh, engineering guesses and what the two construction firms were, I'm just looking for overall to write.
Then I'm confused about a hundred and sixty-four, eight fifty versus ninety-nine, looking at those two columns, what is this sixty-five thousand dollar difference at?
Um, I'll tell you a reason for the big difference in Gordon Construction Services. They are outsourcing everything, so they have more contractors, they're paying top dollar, they're not local, and they are not finding the best deal on the play equipment. Whereas Chase Shepkey is local, he is, he is doing a lot of the work himself. Whereas the, um, Gordon Construction is paying for the, um, playground equipment company to come and install it, where Shepkey will just take delivery of the equipment and install it himself, so there are ways that he has found to lower the price. And the other guy is just a high swag, and these are, these are, you know, his estimate.
Okay, up on the top you say, low bid, Shepkey, play structure a hundred and forty thousand, explain that.
Um, that is.
I mean, you said play structure is fifty-five.
You know what, that was from when Shepkey's bid was two fifteen, the one in front of you now, Shepkey's bid is one seventy-four. So where it says one forty and seventy-five, take that down to ninety-nine, five, and seventy-five. Which is off the.
So we're still spending a hundred thousand dollars on a play structure?
We're, we're spending ninety-nine, five on the, everything except the bathroom, it's the, the play structure, the surfacing, the delivery of the play structure, um, the boardwalk, the ground surfacing, the tree removal, all of that.
So we are actually putting seventy-five thousand dollars into the bathrooms?
Yeah, into the bathroom.
Which consists of a short summary of what? Uh, since we're not changing the building structure, we're just internally rearranging everything from.
Who are you?
One of the, one of the illustrations we had for the layout.
Yep, so because.
Yeah, I was on occasion, why do we have to review this again? We're not, just asking for these numbers to be right, I, I, I don't want to be reviewing, I just wanted to get my number straight.
So very quickly, the bathroom is, um, by removing the structures inside, we do have to redo the floor.
Right.
So it's ripping up the floor, redoing the piping, and putting a new fixture, including, yeah.
That's just the clarification I was hoping for, not helping bring all the story here, I'm just trying to match my numbers up in my mind.
Any other board members, questions on your numbers, or matching things up? All right, thank you Susan, I think I'm clear, I'm worth it.
All right, and I appreciate your clarification too on the next steps, and we'll get that done in the next couple weeks, so, um, thanks for that. Um, just very quickly about this, and the reason why I would like to do this in two weeks is because our goal is to begin work very quickly and finish work very quickly. Um, and it can be done in that timeframe, um, if we, you know, finish this up next week. So while I say that there'll be a demolition, um, right after Labor Day, so we open through August and through the Labor Day weekend, we'd like to demo the bathroom there, but there will be a porta potty on site for people who use the park.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I had on that topic. Okay, going to the next topic, is, uh, the municipal courts, just noting that since we talk less, we have a fire up room, we have three teams for those courts, and we are waiting the camera installed. So the next point is about the camera, to remind you all that in February the board passed, uh, a resolution to accept a quote from Honor Security to put a camera up there. And in order to do that, we need to have electricity installed. So we are having electricity installed to the poles, and Honor will come and put the camera up.
Yeah, we actually both spent the money in the last board meeting, we discussed that we're gonna get a second, a third bolt on the electric. In our minutes, we say, we agreed to spend the twenty-five hundred, you remember?
I, I can make one little comment on that. In February fourteenth, thirteenth, when you passed a resolution to do it, isn't that the same as agreeing to spend the money?
Well, we were still subject to what the total is, because you want to get two more poles.
That's, that's a little, that's a subpart, I wanted to get an extra quote on the subpart of the bigger thing. So I'm, I'm hoping that what you'll see is that, because that's just one line item of the whole camera quote, that we're okay to go. And if you look here on the, the last line I have here, kind of summarizes the, the numbers, the total project is gonna cost forty-five, thirty-one. There's a grant that covers twenty-five, it's.
Right, I mean, that's exactly what I gave out before, nothing's changed, so we, we saw this number, forty-five, thirty, twenty-six, that was already done.
It's actually a, it is a little bit of different number, it's close, but it's a little different, which is why I wrote it here.
But let's just do this.
It's only one project.
Let's just, let's just sum this up with, we will do a motion to approve. The expenditures of the forty-one, forty-five, thirty-one, twenty-six, and the grant covering twenty-five, and Parks, uh, on Tuesday, just to cover.
Okay, that's right.
Do you get that? Let's, let's do that, so that we can at least get a vote on it. If there's board members who don't want to vote on it, they can say no.
Okay.
Or they can say yes.
Okay, and then what I would like to do at that point, and Larry, either you or I can do it, we can talk offline, is to accept that Honor Security, and what they need, Michelle, is, um, a half a dollar payment. Um, and then they will order the partner.
I think we don't have to do the half-dump, and we've been through this a little before, and they waived that requirement because we've done so much business.
Well.
But I will verify that.
God bless you, when I called them, that's what she said, but I was only talking to Amanda, so if you know different.
Ron told me that that would.
I would love that, thank you. I would love that, so.
Well, we can handle that operationally once we get.
Thank you.
I agree, I'm fine with what he said, I, I'm working with it.
Perfect, thank you. Um, the Garrish Township five-year recreation plan, the resident survey is live. We have about forty-five completes to date, I don't think that's that good, um, I expect it to keep the survey open through most of August anyway, but what I'd like to do is, um, repost the note, once we get the new Garrish website up, I'd like to repost the, uh, link to the site, and also re-repost it on other Facebook pages. And I'm saying too, to consider an ad in the resort, and on the back of this piece of paper at the top of the page, is a potential ad, but it would cost sixty-two, eighty-eight to put that in the paper for a week, um, I'm gonna bring it to my committee unless you guys want to tell me what your thoughts are initially on this? If you don't think that's too much money to spend?
We should, I mean, like, okay, I think we should spend money, forty-five people is not.
I'm, I'm hoping for a, for a two-hundred.
And, and you know, I think we need to, um. So I have local businesses, like, you know, let's, let's get their help in getting the word out and.
Well, Mary Jo, you're gonna help, we post some flyers. Okay, so we'll talk about that offline, we don't have to talk about it.
And we just need to be telling everybody, you know, everybody that we can, because, so I'm meeting with the, my, my party's gonna be tomorrow, but what, like it says here, if I can get this into her on Monday, she can post this in next paper, and not in lunchtime.
For that part, sure, okay, so you can get a lot of your questions answered, okay, I just want to make sure you're clear.
I, I.
What I was being asked.
Clear enough, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, this is more, I know it's more for color, so this is a black and white ad.
It, it probably will be a black and white, yes, I'm not gonna, I, I think it's okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, if you guys are kind of in the mindset to do that, um, I'll probably go ahead and do that, because I do have a budget, and I'm gonna show you that in a minute too. Uh, next is Parks Equipment Maintenance, I have on here that Mary, uh, Mary Ellen Keith donated two swings to the township, and we thought we would try to use one to replace the missing swing at the marina, however, we are not going to do that. So what I said here that Russ will install that, that is not true. Um, Russ, and, and I believe him, he, he confirmed that the swings that were donated are not of commercial quality, thus, uh, change on the strong, et cetera, so he is recommended against installing them, and so we are simply missing a swing out there, we'll continue till again, okay, so just ignore that, no big deal. Um, see page two for Parks and Rec Budget in Progress, I wanted to just very briefly tell you where we stand. Um, there's a little bit of money uncommitted yet, which is why I don't have a big problem spending the sixty-two, Michelle, to get that add in the paper.
Yes.
So if, if you just turn the page, on the back of the second sheet at the bottom, I wanted to show you what I envisioned that expenses are for the Parks and Rec. These estimated expenses are things that we know from the past, uh, historically, and things that we have committed to in contracts, like the grants and the NCOG contract, so this shows expected expenses is two twenty-one. The budget for this Parks Committee is two thirty-one, leaves us about seventy-five, or, I'm sorry, ninety-seven hundred dollars, what I'm calling uncommitted to date, but we still may have other expenditures this year. I also wanted to note that of all this money that we're spending, um, sixty-five percent of the money, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna be reimbursed back into Garrish Township because of those grants. So I think we're in okay shape, um, and that ninety-seven hundred, uh, is, is still open for a few other things we're looking for, some signage, some plants, et cetera. There's a few other things we know that we need to do, uh, before the end of the year.
Looks like exactly what we discussed a few days ago, only in a nice intelligent format, thank you. Any other questions, board, I've got two, two requests, uh, for the board. We have, well, we've got to accept the resignation for Brian Lewis on Tuesday. We look for a motion, uh, for the forty-five, thirty-one, twenty-six, and then we're looking for a resolution language, uh, to accept Chase Shepkey as the contractor. Fair?
Fair.
And then you, the IOU from you, Susan, will be, once you get everything together, that proper bid, uh, that, so we can just do with the trust fund sense, or not trust, the passport sense, we can do, which is acceptable bid. Thank you for the format, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members for her?
Thank you for all of our work.
You do a great job, Susan, that's, uh, unfortunately, you're getting introduced to wife government runs so slow. Because it's so cumbersome and clumsy. Thank you, though, uh, we had the cemetery attorney.
Okay, I know the last meeting we talked about, um, hopefully buying somebody to, to purchase a, a new tractor for the cemetery. And in your box this morning, um, you should be going to Tony. And hour and three, we tried one more cup kit, that, that was a dealer which we thought was too far away. But the recommendation is for the, uh, bad boy man for carry duty, and he scratched the stipulations there about why it's a, uh, a little better machine than the other two. Uh, so it's in the mid, the mid price, eighty-nine hundred compared to eighty-three compared to almost eleven, so. Uh, that's our recommendation for that one.
Are you asking for that recommendation to purchase that, uh, at this meeting?
Yes, if I could. Also, just to follow, uh, the other sheet I gave you was a bid, I had some comments about we should subcontract Boeing Cemetery. And, uh, I talked to two of your individuals, one declined, the other one was Keller Landscaping, and their, his bid was there seven hundred a week. And we said, well, based on the twenty-six week bombing program, it's gonna be, you know, over eighteen thousand dollars. Well, I guess my feeling is we should.
What's that?
Said, I'll do it for half.
Yeah, you're hundred. It's a, I actually, in defense of those contractors, it, it's not an easy job, and you know, we, simply put, and I know there were some kind of some feelings that they heard over the comment from one resident who had indicated that it was, we should be subcontracting that out. Um, it's wear and tear on equipment, but not only that, we get an incredible amount of work out of Tony, our part-time individual. Uh, and he maintains that beautifully over there, and we are no weirder that kind of money. This is, uh, this, this less than ten thousand is amateurized across probably seven years, maybe for the life of that tractor. Um, it's just, to me, it is an absolute no-brainer to get the proper thing, this will also, I'm told, uh, assist Tony, it might be a little bit shorter too, it's forty-eight inches, so he's, he has to just cooperate through the layout of the cemetery, which is immensely helpful. So, uh, well, any board member opposed to putting that on for Tuesday?
The other comment was, uh, uh, the maintenance, uh, budget that we pay Tony, his actual wages, last year was about thirty-five hundred, and this year it's thirty-six hundred, so it's, and it's only, you know, basically six months. So, uh, I will get, uh, back with Keller Landscapes and tell them, thanks for the, uh, unless Michelle wants to write something, but I will tell them, thank you, but the board's decided to purchase their own equipment.
Good, you do what now, you want to write a letter?
Well, I just respond to them, because I told them in the email, I said, I will let you know what the board decides, so would you, I can do that?
Perfect, okay, absolutely, okay. I have no issue with that, any other board member have an issue with that, thank you for handling the issue, Terry, appreciate it. And one last thing is I've had some requests for cleaning headstones. And is that anything you want me to pursue, or is that something that we own?
Service from our local, um, people who are in that business.
Right, that's my.
It's a, not a, you, we're not looking into, mine's on the, you know.
Well, I'm talking about is, is they would come in and do it, we would hire, oh yes, yes, we would hire. But I don't know if you want to, either pursue that or just, just drop it.
I would just correct anybody who's interested in, to the local, as instance, to do it.
Okay.
I would suggest.
Okay, that's all, yeah, I know, myself personally, I don't see the need to become government involved in a personal bot with a personal headstone, uh, on it, and have us take on expenditures on that behalf. If they, if those people that own those would like to contract, uh, sure, we have a list of folks that it's available, that might, you know, the township might be able to give them, but I think that's a private contract. So okay, okay, yeah, we have two.
Okay.
We'll do it, you, we should, go from there, I'll tell John. Anybody else question on that?
No, it's good.
Uh, Terry, do you have the name of a local dealer we're purchasing this from? Uh, you should get it, it just says local dealer, size service. Oh wait a minute.
Yeah.
It's on the details of an.
Outdoor equipment.
Or outdoor, outdoors equipment.
Yeah, they have three locations, and obviously we're dealing with the whole thing. There it is.
Very good, thank you, any else on the cemetery, Terry?
No, I think it looks very nice though.
Very good.
I got it, I think Tony does a good job.
It always looks amazing, yes, I agree. Okay, we are then on to ten-thirty, we'll go, we'll go for another issue or two, um, before we break. Uh, Garrish Township compo site compliance permit, permit, I will give you an update, uh, on this, it seems to be a moving target. Uh, as you recall, those of you left in the audience up there, we talked about materials management, and the fact that the county is, uh, putting together the plan, or the grant to try and put together the plan to, uh, comply with the twenty-twenty-three law, um, in the state of Michigan, and it is now matriculating its way obviously to the Eagle Materials Management Section, and, uh, to look at compo sites that are out there, and to determine whether or not they need to have a particular permit to be doing what we're doing. In the past, apparently nobody cared, but I was contacted by Brian Weir of Eagle, and, uh, sent quite a, a, a packet of information with permit. And with the, uh, expectations that we would, uh, allocate seven hundred and fifty dollars with said permit. And with the uh expectations that we would uh allocate seven hundred and fifty dollars with said permit due by November fifteenth. Um I asked, uh I called him up, asked him whether there were subcontractors that performed this type of duty, and he said no. He said, you'll just have to go to the website, and uh you use the interior website, and you can also subscribe to a company called TechSmith to do all your drawing work, because we have to have uh diagrams and drawings of our compost site. Uh and uh they apparently had visited our site on June thirteenth and determined that we fell between uh one thousand cubic yards and uh twenty thousand cubic yards, to be exact, they measured two thousand and forty-nine potential cubic yards. So uh I got with our vendor, Jim Ossling, um he already had drawings. Finally, uh is of 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 the current compost site locations and what we do with our stuff. Since then, uh we went onto the website, started zoning out the application of permit, and I received a call from Brian Weir a couple days ago, whenever election was, two days ago. Uh they wanted me to put a hold on that, because it appears that to him that we may not be a compost compaction site, that we might be a temporary site, meaning that we may be exempt from the seven fifty and that Eagle permit process. It all boils down to uh in his in his mind, and I think we would be a temporary site, we have it hauled off once a year. The company that we use, he very well works with them a lot, uh and has no issue with the company, so that's wonderful. Uh knowing by name, uh and also uh the only thing that we would, there's two issues, one of them is the couple piles that we leave after each year when TDE comes to get, and we let it kind of steep in compost on its own for personal use by residents, by the shovel fold uh type of thing, currently, there are two small piles and a larger pile. I don't know how to measure five hundred cubic yards, I did check with Jim Ossling, he says there's not five hundred cubic yards there. Brian Weir is going to come back out, but uh he believes in his business voice that we don't have five hundred cubic yards. Now, the only thing we have to rectify yet, if we don't fall into the Eagle permit, which I don't know how in the world you'd even implement something like this other than, I guess, making a form available when a resident comes into our site by FOB access and decides they want a yard of our compost and shovel it in there, there's some type of record keeping of you, somebody has to say, Brian Hill came in today, I have to get a form and say that I'm taking one yard of that compost, that seems to me like something that is out of how in the world you would ever accommodate that, so future discussions will happen, it is off our radar at this point. Um I'm going to ask Mr. Weir uh to give me some type of, since he gave me a letter and a packet, and we've had communication, some type of written communication that indeed we are not an Eagle permitted seven fifty compaction site, I would like a record of that, that we indeed are not. So that when this materials management stuff gets to be a fever pitch within the county of where people are going to go dump compost or have compost for these other townships that don't have it, I want us to be alleviated and properly recorded uh as such, that we've done that. And as such, whatever permit discussion paperwork we need for a temporary designation, I want something in writing as well, so that will brief you on that. I fully intended to come to you and say, hey, seven fifty for Tuesday night, but he's asked me to postpone that, he's supposed to have a meeting with his superiors uh yesterday, and I'm expecting a phone call any day now on the result of that. So it sounds to me like there's even questions within their own management organization as to exactly what it is we're recording. I'm glad he's doing his due diligence, he's been very, very easy and good to work with for the public record. Uh so I'll continue to work with him, Jim Ossling is uh gonna continue to work with him as well. Uh and as a as a team, as a vendor, if you will, uh we'll we'll keep on top of that issue. Um so moving right on forward, anybody have any questions about that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, uh moving forward, uh we have the, I want to do the, so I can get probably one more that probably wants to leave, right, we have so, before we take five, ready? Um we have the planning commission, uh we've had a vacancy now for over a year, and I want to thank you, and Brad is here today. Thank you, Brad, for stepping up on behalf of our community and filling that. Um I have tried myself personally in a number of different, trying to say, hey, listen, we need to fill this, uh planning commission. And I view this planning commission that uh it is just imperative, I think it's a I believe that the group we have right now is probably the best we've ever had on a planning commission that understands that, so Brad, um I want to thank you uh for coming forward, you did put in a a letter, um and does anybody have any questions, or Brad, or Brad, you have anything to to add?
I don't have anything to add, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's get that on the agenda for Tuesday.
The the resume is definitely overqualified, so thank you so much for doing that, doing on that.
Having worked with Brad before on other things, I think we are fortunate to have him, so Brad, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Uh we'll get that forward, and then we have before us a recommendation for rezoning of parcel number seven two oh four oh one five oh oh eight two oh three two zero, it came from Tom Barber, it cleared the planning commission as far as the rezoning, I believe, does that, that's the right place?
Yeah.
Uh of rezoning, and so it would be before us uh uh as an item to to recommend the the change in that zoning. I don't want anybody to confuse that it is just a change in the zoning. We all know that, I think, for the most part, I think there's a proposed tower, that a cell tower that might actually be proposed in there, that is a later date, further reviewed by the planning commission, Greg, am I right?
That's correct.
And to jump through all of those hoops, uh before any recommendation came to actually have the use of that via cell tower site. Are we all clear?
Perfect. And once changed, it could be anything within that zoning.
Correct, yeah, so it could, something else could pop up that, Clark, that is with that zone.
Yeah, the recommendation is not because of the salt tower, it's just a change.
Yes, thank you. You're very soft spoken, right? Okay, how about we take about five minutes to relieve the kidneys, and we'll we and we'll come back, so we'll adjourn uh for the record at ten forty, thirty-nine. Ten thirty. For that. Thank you, Terry.
Uh.
All right, very good, we're gonna reconvene the meeting, uh ten forty-five, ten forty-five to the record?
Yeah, ten forty-four.
Ten forty whatever, forty-four for the record, very good. Okay, we're on to ZBA term appointments, um and the one that I'm aware of is John Klein, there's a warrant, Michelle?
No, um no, it's a working, I'm sorry, working projects at the moment, um I have a resignation, any other uh email back? I don't have to learn about other than John, I was just talking to Mary Jo about it, um.
Uh what what we're trying to do, just so you know, is uh get a handle on these various appointments and different boards. Um and uh and to make sure we're we're extending those that have uh looking or are going to expire. Uh and so I I've had, I've asked Michelle to look this stuff over and present to us hopefully something Tuesday night, at least John Klein anyways, but we're gonna have to uh take a look at all these, make sure that our records get in order now when I guarantee those terms with people, fortunately, we don't have people going out one off and all the rest of that. So we need to correct our, make sure our records are correct, so the only one I'm aware of today is John Klein, and so is everybody comfortable moving that forward for zoning more of appeals uh appointment or reappointment, shall we say, and then we'll leave the term limit, Michelle, the terms.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I haven't been writing for my friends, but obviously, it's helping me, right, too.
Yes.
Helping me with those tasks, I guess.
Yes. So, but you need a term for John for Tuesday night, if we're doing this Tuesday night. Or if we're not, we need more time, we can pull it off. And go to the next month, September.
We wanted to do the other ones that are uh expired.
There there is a conflict right now, Mary Jo, between what Mike Briggs has got and of other previous years and what Michelle has uh in the clerk's office, who left her two years ago. We're about somewhere in a in a yearly record, so that's where we're at.
How long a term is the annually, or the?
There are three-year terms, I believe, for each.
Well, I see the number or something, it's about five, it's the twenty-sixth or something?
That is what it would be, I believe, I should, I believe John Klein should have been appointed or reappointed, shall we say, at the end of December of twenty-three to twenty-six. And it either didn't get done or wasn't reflected, right?
Didn't get done.
Yes.
This is the first meeting of the year of this board.
Yeah, right.
And no, didn't get done.
So you're just looking just to make his end on twenty-sixth.
In twenty twenty-six, correct, you stay with the terms that are there, and that's the research that Michelle and Mike Briggs have been doing, I don't know, it was Greg, uh planning commission, I don't know whether you're familiar or not, but uh you could question your fellow PCs and say, hey, what do you, so you, did we just do this with you?
I think mine was telling years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know what else.
And he had an old record that he was working from, and I I I can't verify.
No, I think not because uh it was missed, and had to do a multiple days to rectify it, I know that planning commission is done.
About Tom Barber, he's expired July first.
That's what we have.
Yeah, there's three of.
Tom, we do.
Just did.
We just did, we just did Tom Barber.
Somehow it's twenty-seven.
Oh, like Burke. Burke, I don't know, I don't think he's to three years yet, I'm sorry, say, I don't believe he's to three years yet.
I don't think he is either.
Says twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry, I was looking for Burke. Okay, the do, do we know for sure John Klein, uh Terry?
If you feel the line is writing, I don't have any proof.
So let's see, if we have a new writing, if we know John Klein, shall we do John Klein Tuesday night? We can pick these up in September, and and these are just formalities, okay? We go with that? We're gonna reappoint John to the three-year term and ending the date that he'll get, right? Michelle?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, moving on, sign replacement request, uh right after the last board meeting, I got contacted by a gentleman uh requesting a sign, which is a green and white sign, I think I just went that green and white sign um at Hoover and East Higgins Lake Drive. And in checking with the road commission, uh that is a no sign request for a not, for a certified road at East Higgins Lake and Hoover, it's green and white, it was constantly, we caught, it's all been roughly a hundred and fifty dollars. And uh I sent that information to you full term in the month. And I guess, um I know, I've been now envisaged it there, I think I understand the plight of the resident, literally Hoover is a busted up road. Uh part of it, even though they still consider it certified apparently, because down at Kenwood, coming back to Woodland, it's a common usage road. On the other end of it, at East Higgins Lake Drive, um it's like the best kept secret in northern Michigan, but because it's a certified road, it has to have a green and white sign, and of course, once again, we we have to build, we have to pay the one-fifty definitely down. And then secondly, there are uh another issue that we have, these are, this is an uncertified road, Ford Street. Ford Street had two signs stolen within the last forty-five days. And they're blue and white, and once again, according to the road commission, um because they're uncertified now, we have to pay that too for those to use them, so it's all, we have to pay everything and pay their, them to put them off and get them. That's what I was.
Right, doesn't it?
Well, I've done it, listen, I, you'll never hear me talk one or two about that relationship. Well, I'll tell you to the face, I think our policies are ultimately very deprecious and uh certainly uh sort of self-serving, so. Uh but anyways, um so I need the board's thought process on this, uh Mr. Hoover, obviously, they can't get, they can't get a furniture truck, they can't get anybody to recognize where they're at on Hoover, there are a couple residences that have gone full-time down there now, and now it becomes an issue. And Hoover, uh for your ratification, is south of Maplehurst and north of of uh Pear. And it's on the left-hand side as you're going north uh towards Garris Park or whatever there, but I did use Garris Park as a reference, but towards um Bear Road, that's better. So that's where it is, um it certainly could use a sign, uh I don't know why we would deprive him, when we don't deprive deprive others of getting a proper roadside. Thoughts?
Do we have choice, really?
Well, you could tell the guy no, but.
Non-certified.
No, no, it's not, it's certified, that one.
That's always non-certified.
Yeah, it it has, it has signs, how's that sound?
Hmm.
It has some segments, Hoover does, but yet it is marked by a green sign, it's marked by a green sign down green and white. And so therefore, that means the road commission considers that to be a part of the certification. Although it sure doesn't mean the rest of Hoover like that, but. Anybody, you don't, don't, don't jump too fast.
I don't understand why, why they're not responsible. I I are there roads that are maintained by them?
The gr- the green and white will always be maintained once they're there. So if Hoover's sign had been stolen, and it was green and white, they would then replace that. This is the creation of a new sign at East Higgins Lake Drive and Hoover, green and white, thus the township's responsibility. Once it is there, then that becomes their responsibility for the rest of the time. So in other words, once we pay the one-fifty to put it there, they'll maintain it if it gets knocked over, they'll ma- they'll maintain it if it's stolen or some somehow missing or otherwise. And um they'll do that for a green and white road, however, on the blue and white roads, that have blue and white signs, that essentially are non-certified notes, um it it they it they were stolen at Ford Street, I think we all know why somebody took Ford uh on both ends at Resfor, East Higgins Lake Drive, and those are our responsibilities. Um and I know there have been those replaced before here in the township. So I'm pretty sure there's precedent on both these issues, but we don't worry about it. Come, come to Swammer, I hear you.
I, yeah.
It will, it will, it will complete our signing budget for the year, I will tell you that. Buzz?
Uh just from the police department uh standpoint, it'd probably be helpful for the officers if there are a couple full-time residents down there now with identifying that road and their addresses.
Yeah.
That's just my.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. Good point.
So let's take it one at a time, are we able to say that we're well, we know that we're ready to vote as board members to approve the Hoover uh avenue at East Higgins Lake Drive uh to erect that sign, green and white? I think so, yes.
I'm with that.
Taking a poll, no voting, yeah?
No.
For most.
Because if you're familiar with that section, it doesn't even look like a road.
It does not.
A sign, it would be very helpful, it's.
It's not, my personal.
It's not even a two-track, really.
Yeah, my personal opinion is, once again, um with the road condition, it's a road, we should go take care of it, and pull the thing open, and get it, make it look like a road.
Right.
In all sections, not just segmented, the problem is, is the people that are down there, you, their their only real access uh that people reckon, or would recognize is sparrow and a two-track.
Right.
I believe it is to go back in behind to get to the Hoover intersection. And uh so it's a problem.
Abraham, how did nine-one-one ever find them?
Well, nine-one-one will find it, but it is, we we, they they have an up-to-date uh GPS map, it's not Google, but it's a better version uh in there, that's how we find those things, that knowledge that we. In there, that's how we find those things. That knowledge that we know that Hoover runs all the way across there. And so you gotta look for it in segment branches, but. Yep, and then let's take the blue and white signs then for the replacement, so to move to a replace. The Ford Street stolen sign. On that Ford Street? Yep. On East Higgins Lake Drive? Yep, east and resource. Okay, but at East Higgins Lake, it was always a green sign. We walked down there a whole lot of times and it was always a green sign that said Ford Street. Well, according to the fellow I talked to, he said they're blue. Buzz, can you clarify that before Tuesday? One of your guys? Ford Street identified without a street sign on either side?
There's a empty pole there.
And and then I guess contact the. Contact the road commission and find out what indeed it is. I know it has to be seen, well, should be blue and white. It's not made in hate on either side.
Well, it'd be all the same, like, not really top hatch.
Yeah, that's that's my point. I know that the county does not and. There. Just verify platted or not platted. That's all we really know, we need to know. Because if the sign goes up, it shouldn't be green and white. No, it's. Okay, well, I believe it. I know you walk. We had the time down there. So that's what we're questioning, Buzz. Can you help us out?
Yeah.
For that, I am going to say, would you guys want to move to replace the, replace the Ford Street stolen signs? Obviously, through the night. And and again, I wanna tell everybody that our signing budget is depleted. Will be depleted with that issue.
I think we need officers aware that those signs were taken.
Yeah, we're interested in them if you ever find them in a search warrant.
Yeah, my, I mean, my, my thought is, you know, somebody's last name Ford that they took them.
Or Ford.
Or they're a Ford fan of the vehicle or something, that that's kind of my thought.
Okay, those two things are planned to be on the agenda. Buzz, you did that clarification for me while before Tuesday, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Number twelve is, it's been hanging over since May. You ought to ask again last month. Well, how much would a resident get charged if we participated in the national flood plan for insurance? And I checked with some insurance companies and residents, be clear, it's not the township, it would be residents in every home. A minimum would be two thousand dollars a year, just for the flood insurance. Keep in mind, they claim we're in a, theme of claims within a flood plan. So literally, you could akin this to taxing people two thousand dollars a year by one vote. And I wanna make sure you know that. Now, that being said, we don't have to vote. On anything if we don't wish to participate. If we wish to participate, we must create the ordinance and then we must do all the infrastructure.
Just saying, we can ignore it.
We can ignore it. I just want you guys to tell me if we're ignoring it.
Ignore it.
I, my personal opinion is, is it should have been ignored almost day one, but. Yeah, ignore it. It's off the, it will no longer have any early in my game until it comes up another couple of years from now.
Unlying.
Where they're looking for help when the hurricanes come through Florida and Charleston and whatever. Okay, good, glad you did that one.
Yeah.
Number thirteen, as you're all aware, all the board members are aware, I'm talking, we're, excuse me, aware, I've talked to them all personally. Are aware of the budget adjustments. I, since coming in. I immediately looked at April and knew that this this budget wasn't proper, it wasn't right when it came to where things were located. The clerk had come to me, obviously, the requirements that simply put. Weren't weren't enough to base some things out of the average. So. I worked with clerk squires and with Jim Anderson, our consultant. On the first quarter analysis of our budget, which we, which was approved April at the March. End of year, end of year for this year, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. I gave you all a, an extension, an extensive of the where. We moved some things around in the budget. And also took, you had, you all had predicted thirty five thousand of interest in its entirety for the year where you predicated that budget. And the township's interest likely is to be well over a hundred and ten thousand just in the general fund, which is. So it's, that money would be, would have been available, if you will, to to help tap into some of this, being short. And so when you get on through, obviously, I want to, Tuesday night. I would like to propose these budget amendments, which will then cover anything, everything that we have all talked about since April first. And including our well and any of the things that we have. The the roads which we were kind of meant to get, if you will, to stay on track. Any questions on those at all? This, that includes Terry, your, your, the cemetery piece that we talked about.
Is there any reason this line's on there or we're just talking about that?
It's just, I have no idea why that line is there.
Just.
That line might be telling somebody or a toner might be mad at that, which it keeps telling me the toner's low at the. At the Rico and and I'm told we don't replace that, they can't see the lines anymore, so. Meaning lines are, so. I, that is, that's out of my favor.
I was just.
Okay, very good. So I number, like, because I'm tracking a little eleven here, but we have to approve the budget amendments as proposed. For the quarter. And thank you for the equipment. My. But as I have, I guess I've been saying and I've been talking to clerk squires as well. I know there were some great expectations for some more projects or whatever there. I simply. Do not see, and it's just one board member's opinion, you all can do what you like, but. And projects, by the words of context, unless they were previously budgeted or certain, cannot be in our vocabulary until April of twenty twenty five. As we move forward until we can get this thing, this son of a lot of a touch. And figure it out. God bless. That we have had interest at at a good interest rate being earned for the last couple of years. Which is, I I think helped more so hide the fact that, you know, our, our, our extra, our voted. Headly on ninety five, whatever, is a real problem that hasn't been addressed to get to what I call another set of revenue. And so I think that's occurred and like many other jurisdictions. An editorial comment by me. The ARPA funds, I think, have lulled a lot of communities and government to sleep and that's what you're seeing down here. They they didn't see what it was doing, that was, everybody was flushed with money and but yet. They didn't treat it as that one time offset money and so therefore, they, the budget looks kind of. Icky. Twenty twenty five was predicted to be the foot in the bucket for about every municipality and I don't think this one's any different, so. Please, as you're thinking, as people talk to you, there's, there's simply, I don't see the availability to make a lot of things happen. It has to be discussed the next one year as we move forward. Whether it's an employee request, whether it's a, a request for stones in a different spot. Somebody put a flagpole replacement thing a long time ago that was out there to be done. And and it's on my desk, which I'm gonna give back to the clerk because the supervisor, I think, left it for me. There's just simply not the funds there to do so for those things. So that's my humble opinion. One, again, I keep saying that. If you all feel differently and you wanna vote different, that's fine. But I'm just letting you know of my analysis. I do plan on doing a six month. Analysis after the second quarter, which will be coming fairly soon. And making sure that we're not any further out. The rest of the lines we looked at. At June thirtieth, looked like we could be targeted. So barring anything odd or whatever, we should be what we look like. This should handle. We shouldn't see another adjustment. Okay, any questions? Perfect. That will be on the agenda. Then if you approve that as presented, that should get us what I call somewhat of a workable and understandable one. Number fourteen, if I have to take full claim and responsibly, I wish everything that's here. I do apologize at the last regular meeting. I was experiencing a high sugar problem that I didn't realize and my buzzer didn't go off. My mind got really fogged and during that meeting. We had discussed cyber insurance and we actually took a motion. By clerk squires and it was supported by trustee Appi at that time. And then I know clerk squires had some comments and I went into the swirl mode, I guess. And I failed to call for that question. I would like to fix that today. And so we can move on with what the board's wishes would be. So before I even open this up again. Is there anybody misunderstood what happened? Apparently, I failed to call for the question. My fault. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, so that being said. I would like to pick this up. Do we still have a motion and I would like you to reaffirm it today? Clerk squires?
Yes.
Would you let the record reflect that? And then trustee Appi, are you willing to again?
Yes.
They're good, so we have no changes to that. And essentially is a on the table thing and it's left open. Any further discussion about that? So the motion would be. The board approved the Michigan Township Park Plan add on rider to our township policy for cyber insurance. For two hundred fifty thousand dollars and a cost of twelve hundred and seventeen a year.
Our policy is for an annual policy?
Yes.
So this will be tolerated?
I will, I will tell you this, I would be asking for and assuming that. If we don't get it, when I contact them, if you guys all say yes to this, I would be asking that and if I find something else. I would commit us to that.
It's a project, but not papers, you have.
Correct. Correct. And I'm pretty sure that would be the case, Larry, but. So that being the question, I'd like to call for the questions. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same? Motion carried. Thank you and I apologize, everybody. In the. Too late to classify. I have one more issue. And most of it is a tag up. As most of you are aware. We had a situation at Grove Peak Academy. That had to do with mowing. And under an agreement that we, that was able to find back like two thousand four, no, two thousand eleven or something. With the signature of Frank Camola, supervisor and now clerk, or clerk Valentino at the time. Had entered into an agreement with Grove Peak Association in which we would. We would vendor payment, be a vendor or payment vendor for the Grove Peak Association for mowing of twenty one hundred and seventy five feet. Of the area that was defined within it. And in light of that, we got a bill for the eight thirty one for this year. I think it was eight thirty one, eight thirty one was thirty six anyways. And when I I got carbon copy down there. So I went back to see because it's close to that thousand dollar limit kind of thing or whatever. But anyways, they sent me, the road commission sent me the agreement. And I discovered that in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. That the township did pay for the service, however, no one either billed, contacted, phone called, whatever. To get the payments for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Both years between the two of them was about two thousand blocks. So I offered a letter and I I had the fellow come in. They had a change in treasure, which I think why I'm there and they missed it. We had a change in a clerk and a treasurer about the same time. And when I researched in the file, I found that since two thousand fourteen. No one in the clerk's office had generated any invoices for those in a business process. So I found out, I contacted the previous clerk, we found out that what would happen is. The road commission would send its invoice to us. She would dial up the treasurer of the Grove Peak and they would promptly come in and they would pay the treasurer's office. And get a miscellaneous receipt. But there were no business processes to show since two thousand fourteen, so an incoming clerk would have never known to build that situation. And not being part of that agreement or having historical knowledge for either clerk squires or treasurer Hoover, they would have no knowledge of trying to generate an invoice. I met with that individual and then I know I have talked with all of you personally. And they they have asked for, you know, some type of an agreement because we both made a mistake. And trying to maybe say they would only pay us, you know, for one year and we eat one year. And in, I I just, I, I, I can't quite rectify that. My mind, public money. No other place gets a public road paid for to be voted, whatever, in agreement. And I do say, just for discussion today. I do say that, look, I I don't mind if we take a quarterly payment or something until they're caught back up. I do know they run by membership dues. I do know they just expended fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars on boat ramp. And those kinds of things, so I don't know what their cash flow is or otherwise. They certainly weren't prepared to pay all three years when I discussed. With them, he did pay this years. And I promised to get back with him. And so I'm uncomfortable at this point just getting back with him without a neat spoken discussion, folks. What would you like me to pursue on behalf of this board?
I kind of consider it. Just like people call me all the time about me to waive my twenty five dollar NSF fee or. To waive this fee because I paid it late and I don't want to be a penalty. I consider it township money. I waive it for no one. I don't care what your excuse is because I don't have any right as a person. To all, to waive something that was legally owed to the township. And this is legally owed to the township.
Great. Terry? Yeah, if it was our personal business, you know, it'd be a lot more. Be easier to sell, say, okay, we'll keep up good relationship, we'll take your, you take. But since it is public money. I think we have a responsibility to the, to the public and we should collect it. Let's do it. I don't.
I just don't, they're fine. So it's eight hundred and thirty one dollars or something like that a year?
This, well.
From what I know.
Listen, the one year in between was thousand and twenty nine or something dollars, which actually exceeded the one thousand dollar limit within the the agreement. Meaning that, you know, it's time, materials, labor, I don't know whether it grew more in one year, it was harder, the employees spent more time down there. I don't know. It's the invoice is very vague. It says mowing Grove Peak, eight hundred and thirty one dollars or. They do it once a year in July. The only reason why I caught it is because I have institutional knowledge. About all of those arguments and the lawsuit and all that down there. And when I saw it, I'm like, oh, I'm I'm quite willing to bet you that this is probably got under the radar somewhere. And then I've been looking for the contract and we have, we now have it in our files, but. Apparently it was neglected to be put in by previous folks that were responsible for those offices, so. We're back on track. And well, we know and Michelle now knows that when that invoice comes in in July every year, we turn around and we invoice. Properly to the business address. So that they come in and pay it. We don't pay it until such time that that money's paid.
So I I think, especially with your last statement there, I don't think that we should pay until they pay.
Oh, wow. I can't do that. Can't do that, but we we do have an agreement, I mean.
Yeah, we're just.
And I I just have a hard time with people to be feeling that. You know, they know it's there, whether the contract's in front of them or not, that I don't owe it because we didn't fill it. I mean, where's your moral ethic?
Well, in their defense, it's always worth an ask. You know what I mean? It's worth an ask, but the reality is.
But then don't get mad if you say, you know, residents need.
And and I don't think we should be ashamed of answering it, just like that. I mean, it's relevant, it's, it's relevant.
Okay, would you all like me to just write a letter to them requesting that? Now, let me ask you, is there any credence given whatsoever to? Allowing them to formally pay it till they're caught up, so that we're good to go till July?
We could be.
Currently, I have not, so.
With the understanding that. If I would like to see it maybe taken care of before the next summer.
Oh, no, no, it has, it has, yeah, sure, sure. But what my. We do have, once again, it's unfortunate, we do have some culpability issues.
Absolutely.
It's a business process in our place that had not been followed correctly since apparently two thousand fourteen. Now, I I I as much as anybody else comes in the generation, I believe, a shake of the hand and a word is fine, but. Now, I, 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 as much as anybody else comes in the generation, I believe, is shaking a hand and the words is bond, but at the end of the day, that's not very helpful to offices for the future. So, uh, you wouldn't know, how would I know? How would anybody know coming in? And so uh, it, the mistake happened down there and took, and so. Okay, I, would you like me to just write an offer of the letter back to them?
And the letter stated exactly what, that they can pay quarterly?
If that's what you wish me to say.
The two years.
I'll, I'll, they can either commit to pay the two years, um, and the board's not willing to do a negotiation with public money.
So who are you thinking we should have the money by?
I was, I'm by next season. I would already.
If I did our fiscal year, by next April.
It's just, it'd be for this season. It's the two years that prior.
So give it a year to make your payment, however you wanna do it.
Thank you.
I think that's fair. Well, yeah, I just don't wanna go.
Well, listen, once again, I just wanna call everybody's attention to it. We have culpability in that as well. And fair is fair. Now, that being said, I completely agree with all the comments today that it's not my money.
It's people's money.
Okay, very good. Uh, that was what I had, uh, as well. Terry, you have anything for good of the order?
Well, just one thing is congratulations to Mary Jo and to Michelle on your victories, and I wish you luck in the next four years or eight years, twelve years, or however long. Okay, so. Anyway, good luck.
Thank you, Terry. Um, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna miss you.
Over here.
Yeah. It's definitely going away. It's gonna take down another wall.
Yeah, well, Larry.
I'm down here on that and nothing else.
Okay, ready? Uh, Mary Jo? Anything? Go to the order.
Uh, we got her.
Uh, Michelle? Yeah, you're good. Um. To the two enduring individuals, very nameful to the public.
Actually, I had one thing I couldn't say.
You can.
I just wanted to, uh, expand a little bit on the discussion earlier about the planning commission and short-term rental.
Yes, yes, yes.
I would let everybody know that it was two weeks ago today that Tom Barber and I met with the, uh, representatives from both Roscommon Township and from Markley Township that he had a short-term rentals for them. Uh, and we discussed theirs. They're, they're quite similar. Um, but honestly, it was quite surprising in that, uh, there's methods to put most of the onus of things like inspections and stuff on the part of the, uh, the short-term rental owner themselves. So that's one of the reasons that it works pretty slick for those two townships. And I also understood that line Township was working on something also. I'm not sure. I think it was their planning commission being ox where they, they watched that. I wasn't able to attend that.
I'm pretty sure that'll be a one of them.
Yeah, it didn't get, it didn't get, um.
Did not, did not get asked. In any case, there were, both those townships that we talked to were very happy with what they'd done. They had a positive cash flow. Um, it does, um, require, uh, attention. In other words, it's, it's a job. Um, although it's not like a forty-hour a week job or anything, but it's a job that someone would have to do in order to keep their records. But everybody's pretty happy with it. And, uh, and they think that in the community itself, it's done a good job with keeping.
Bringing a positive cash flow statement, does that mean it's enough to pay a part-time person to manage those registrations and the addition?
I think so. I think that they were talking about three to five thousand dollars of positive cash flow. And they did have different levels of licensing fees, but the licensing fees were yearly renewed. Um, and they, they were pretty happy with it.
Did they want a fee amount? Did they?
Was it zoning?
Amount of short-term rentals?
They did. Um, and that could be changed. They created the order such that they could allow that to be a different number in the future. And one of them, I think it was, uh, I think it was in the two, they had forty-five as some of it. Um, so I, you know, I think it's worked really well for them. You can't deny it, but you can regulate it. And they've figured out a way to regulate it. And they've done well. It's been a couple of years now.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see on that, if it's just administered in zoning-wise, because I, you know, all the laws now indicate that the state doesn't wanna see that any longer. So locals can invent in the zoning that whole process. And so the very first thing we'll hear from Jason is who's putting a fourth street? And I agree. So I would wanna make sure that anything we had, thinks about that's funded, if you will, of its position for however many hours we would need, for however many, the planning commission would recommend that we have licensed.
Yeah. And the people that, uh, worked with us were their ordinance enforcement officers, which is something I don't think that we have.
We know.
Uh, so I don't know how that would translate, but Tom is putting together something for the next meeting to talk about it in more specific terms.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's just something I wanted to give to the people.
Yeah. Do, do you know, is that a police-powered ordinance or is that a?
I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. See, you can always, you can have a police department, but you can also have an ordinance enforcement person. So we could create a position for enforcement just for that short-term, uh, rather.
And slash.
And like.
Take course.
Well, if you notice that, there's a lot to think about it, you can do. But, uh, so yeah, I appreciate your work and the update. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anything else?
Two, so? Do you, you, you have a marksman, a recce morning?
I do. I have one tomorrow morning here.
At nine, can?
It's ten.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You had a meeting, ten?
No, we'll be ten o'clock tomorrow, so I have to mark.
Yeah, I'm looking up there though. That's a good idea. Okay, very good. Uh, hearing nothing. Uh, Chief, anything else? Final votes? Okay, very good. I would entertain a motion adjourned at eleven, eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven. I'll make a good reason. Uh, and anybody support that?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Uh, favor discussed. All those in favor, keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Most say, motion carried. Don't, don't forget, board members, uh, Susan may have a special meeting request, uh, to, to practice what we talked about in the coming week or two.